Everybody, please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Before we do our prayer, we're going to observe a moment of silence for Mr. Harry Bud Rogers, former Fair Board President and longtime Fair Board Member. He served this community for more than thirty years as a dedicated servant, and he will be missed.
If everyone will choose, if you choose to join me for the Lord's Prayer, please bow your heads. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, and will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you. Please be seated.
Yeah, our next public workshop will be next Wednesday in this room at ten thirty, and the next regular meeting will be next Thursday. It'll be delayed due to the President's Day holiday on Monday when the county offices are closed. And we're going to start off today's day with a presentation resolution honoring the retirement of Mr. Tim Schaffner, Executive Director of Trumbull County Children's Services.
No, we need to, I, last week I said that this item needs to be on the agenda. Every Commissioner has the ability to instruct staff to put things on the agenda. If it is not on the agenda and part of the public meeting, then it will not be journalized forever for future generations to see the service of Mr. Schaffner, and it's my intention to make sure that this is properly done and journalized. So let's start the meeting, and then someone please read a motion from the floor because our clerk did not put it on as instructed.
Don't go, don't go belittling the clerk. Don't start out this way today.
Should have been put on, so please do call the roll and then someone make that motion so that we can make sure it's properly journalized. It's not just a, you know, sometimes we give things out for the twenty under twenty, but this is an important service that he's done for our community. Thank you.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Here.
Ms. French Co?
Here.
Mr. Malloy?
Here.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I don't have a copy of it. Go ahead, you go, make the motion. You've done this before.
Okay, on behalf of the board, I'd like to make a motion to present a resolution to Mr. Tim Schaffner, our Trumbull County Children's Services Director, who's done a phenomenal job over his time here in Trumbull County. Is there a second?
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Schaffner, we have a resolution for you. Would you like to come up, please?
Want to join?
Yes. Thanks.
Hey, uh, this is the resolution on behalf of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners honoring Timothy E. Schaffner on his retirement from Trumbull County Children's Services. And whereas it is with great pleasure that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners joins others in honoring Timothy E. Schaffner upon his retirement from the Trumbull County Children's Services, and whereas Timothy retired effective, Timothy, it's Tim, retired effective February ninth, twenty twenty-four, with over forty-nine years of dedicated service to children and families. Forty-nine years, folks. Whereas Tim began his career at Sagamore Hills Children's Psychiatric Hospital, served an executive leadership role at Western Reserve Care System, Health Valley Counseling Services, and Community Services, Children's Resource Center, and spending the last twelve years as the executive director of Trumbull County Children's Services. And whereas Tim's experience, dedication, and devotion proven invaluable during his years of service, willingly shared his knowledge, experience, and expertise to advance best practice in residential treatment and trauma and informed care all children and families. He has spearheaded Ohio's Behavioral Health Transformation. The excellent relationships he has cultivated and maintained in the community with everyone he has worked with over the years has earned him enormous respect he so well deserves. He's been depended upon for guidance, initiative, friendship, and knowledge. Served the residents of Trumbull County in a caring, professional manner. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners joins the staff of Trumbull County Children's Services Office in congratulating Tim Schaffner upon his retirement. Clearly wishes him many years of happiness, good health, and relaxation, which for Trumbull County Commissioners, Danny Malloy, Maro Cantala Mesa, and Nikki French Co.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to say I want to thank all the elected officials who have always been so supportive of Trumbull County Children's Services, from the city to the county to the state. And particularly, our voters have always voted in our levies, and this is a levy year, so. Thanks, Keith. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Hey. Thank you all.
Oh, yeah. Did she sign it?
Yeah.
Yeah, number one.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and accept and approve the video recordings of the January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four regular meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Can-
I just want to say that they're done incorrectly. Whenever you have meeting minutes that are written, you have to identify, you have to give the, they must be done in a fashion that gives the reader the ability to understand the discussion. And what we have here that were sent to us for approval was just the names of the individuals, and it said discussion, and then it listed names, so no reader would be able to identify that. Therefore, they're incorrect, and I've been saying that to our clerk, this, this one, and the one in the past, and I would just appreciate it if they would do them pursuant to their advice code. Go ahead.
We do have a video recording of them. There's transcribed every seven seconds on YouTube with the exact wording.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Don't say that.
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
No.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item number three is to approve the municipal advisory agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and MAS Financial Advisory Services LLC to serve as a fiscal consultant for Trumbull County. Trumbull County agrees to pay a retainer fee of eight thousand dollars. The agreement shall be effective commencing February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and ending February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Because it appears to be prepared by the vendor, and it hasn't been reviewed, and they have done no RFQ, which is something that we got a citation or a mention on for our audit, I'm just going to vote no.
Can, can we get some clarification on that from the prosecutor's office?
Um. I've already voted, is that the time for, uh?
Well, if there's information that could potentially change that, I don't know.
I'm not going to change my vote. I just prefer to just move forward.
I'm not asking anybody to change a vote.
As far, as far as the RF, RFP and your office reviewing it.
Sure, just, yeah, just if you want the clarification, I'd be glad to. It is an agreement that's been reviewed by our office. We reviewed it this year, but it's also the same format that we have reviewed in prior years. The contract never changes terms essentially, other than, than the dates, so that, that is, it has been reviewed. Second of all, the amount of the contract is under the competitive bidding threshold of seventy-five thousand dollars. Moreover, it's, it's a contract for the services of essentially professional services, which are most oftentimes exempt from competitive bidding under three oh seven eighty-six anyway.
Thank you.
As for the seventy-five thousand dollars, we haven't adopted that as the county's guidelines for that yet, and as well, we do have something that we resolved the first year that I started that said that we would still go back and review everything as it was coming to expire in order to do an RFQ, just as we did with the medical jail, anything. We're just, it's just a good effort to continue to look at other vendors, and we resolved that when I started, but haven't been doing it, so.
Well, for, for what it's worth, the Commissioners, for purposes of general purchasing, don't need to adopt the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold. The state of Ohio has done that through its amendments to three oh seven eighty-six. As far as whether the Board wants to voluntarily bid things that are under that threshold, certainly up to the discretion of the Board. You can, you can do competitive selection if you'd like to, but it's not a legal requirement.
We already have that as part of our procurement policy, so we still have to abide by, even though the state has done that, we still have to abide by what we have set for.
Any, any state law would supersede that.
Well, again, that's the policy decisions like that, that's left to the Board's decision.
Yeah.
Item number four is to adopt a resolution approving the attached list, labels then and now, January twenty twenty-four, greater than one hundred dollars of purchase orders to the various vendors as then and now purchase orders in compliance with O R C five seven zero five point four one D.
A motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item number five is to enter into an inter-agency cooperative agreement between the Trumbull County Automatic Data Processing Board and the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services for electronic data processing services for the period effective January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and ninety-six cents, to be paid through various shared expenses. Agreement allows the Trumbull County Automatic Data Processing Board to provide electronic data processing services to the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services.
Make a motion to approve. Second, the motion.
Why is this coming late? Jobs and Family Services, again, putting it in late, or?
Um, first of all, it's based upon what was spent last year, and those, that accounting needed to be done. Second of all, it is, if you had read what was sent to you, you would know that this was approved. We didn't get a read receipt on this. This was not last weekend. I never got a read receipt, so I know you didn't read it. But, but, but you didn't read the read receipt. But at any rate, you would know that it was approved by, also by the prosecutor, and that there was an email in there that also suggested, or that said that it's fine for January first, for it to go back. Additionally, and I'll, if it's okay, I'll speak for you, Mr. Gargano. Additionally, Job and Family Services has also checked with the state and said so long as there has been no payment made or no invoice on it, it was okay.
Thank you.
Have you done an analysis to make sure that the costs are covered for this one and the next one?
Yes, that was part of what I just explained.
I thought.
Lamont, please.
You said that was what they spent last year, but just.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Abstain.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number six is to approve an inter-agency cooperative agreement between the Trumbull County Automatic Data Processing Board and the Trumbull County Child Support Enforcement Agency for electronic data processing services for the period effective January first, twenty twenty-four, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed sixty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars, ninety-three cents, federal share of forty-four thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars and seventeen cents. The purpose of the agreement is to provide personnel for immediate service and technical assistance on all agency software equipment such as telephones, computers, printers, copies, et cetera, video conference assistants, and maintaining agency forms. Funding source comes from sixty-six percent federal funds and thirty-four percent local funds.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Because I don't have any proof that the costs are covered, and it wasn't in my file, I'll abstain.
Item number seven is to approve an agreement for legal services between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, the Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney, and the Board of Parks Commissioners of the Trumbull County Metro Parks for the provision of legal services by the prosecuting attorney for the benefit of the Trumbull County Metro Parks.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Don't call the roll, and if there's discussion. This was something that we were talking about for the last few weeks about the Prosecutor's Office and providing services to the metro parks. It creates a conflict, and it's only, it certainly doesn't cover the costs of the prosecutor's services.
If we were to go out for, if, if the, if the metro parks were to go out for another, to retain another law firm, it would cost the Commissioners more money, because we fund the metro parks.
You don't have, you don't have to.
You don't have to fund the metro park?
You don't have to fund them. I'm saying, we don't have to fund them at that level, and it's created a discussion that relates to a conflict of interest, and in our most recent letter from the Prosecutor's Office, he said that they were having a hard time getting things done for us because of the amount of work that they have, so if there's a contract for, how much is it, what's the cost of it for a dollar? It's just concerning. I'd rather not have a contract.
Concerning to collaborate and coordinate with other county agencies, and rather spend money, taxpayer money.
It's, it's their board.
And, and by the way, the board and everything to do with the dam removal, and that's the only issue we've ever had with the Parks Board. They've hired outside counsel anyway.
Okay, so, good.
But what about for the rest of their coverage?
I'd rather, I'd prefer not to create a potential conflict of interest like we already have when we were talking about asking them for an opinion related to the dam. That's just my opinion.
We can still get an opinion, we can still get an opinion related to the dam.
All right.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
No.
Item number eight is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of County Commissioners, to execute on behalf of the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office the annual federal equitable sharing agreement and certification report for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and to authorize the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office to electronically file the document.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item number nine is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the purchase of asphalt, concrete, and asphalt emulsion materials to be furnished to the Trumbull County Engineers Highway Department throughout the duration of the contract period of April first, twenty twenty-four, through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve. Second, the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item number ten is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the purchase of bituminous materials to be furnished to the Trumbull County Engineers Highway Department throughout the duration of the contract period of April first, twenty twenty-four, through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Excuse me, motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item number eleven is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for a proposal for the year twenty twenty-four Road Rehabilitation Program.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item number twelve is to concur with the county engineer authorizing Bezetta and Kinsman Townships to establish weight limits on the township roads as listed. But Bezetta Township, the two roads are Cadwater-Sonk Road and Durstclag Road, and Kinsman Township, Ward-Christie Road.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permit to move overweight equipment requested by the company listed, and that's Midwest Landing Land Clearing.
A motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed, and those companies are Coca Development L T D, Right Speed of Ohio LLC, Mike Coats Construction Company, Inc., and Dominion East Ohio.
A motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils requested by the company listed, and that's J Road Transportation Services, Inc.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits for fleet vehicles requested by the companies listed, and those companies are R and L Carriers, Midwest Land Clearing, Van Curran Tree Service, Sayer Construction, Inc., Gregor Trucking, and Distributor Services, Inc.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item seventeen is to enter into a professional services, service agreement with M S Consultants, Inc. to provide professional engineering services for the T R U South Main Street Bridge, Warren City Number One, located on South Main Street over the Mahoning River in the city of Warren. The professional services agreement was prepared by the Ohio Department of Transportation in the estimated amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand, ninety-four dollars.
A motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Item number eighteen is to ward all bids submitted for the purchase of aggregate material for use by the Trumbull County Engineer, and to enter into a contract with each company listed for all materials which the, which, which the companies bid. Contracts will be affected, effective for the term commencing February eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and ending February tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes, and I'll, I'll read the next one. I'm having a hard time with the search actually making the changes and doing things that she's asked to do. So the next one will be to ratify a letter of support for the Society of St. Vincent de Paul's Visionary Initiative to establish a new hunger and community education center in this community. The organization's commitment to addressing hunger and providing community education workforce development services is truly commendable, and to authorize anyone present on the board to execute or to sign.
No one can hear that.
It's, it's the same thing, except for it's ratifying, executing is something, these are contracts, ratifying is something that we would use for terminology for letters. So that's my motion. Do you want a second?
Clerk, please read the motion as is.
Item nineteen is to execute a letter of support for the Society of St. Vincent de Paul's Visionary Initiative to establish a new hunger and community education center in the community. The organization's commitment to addressing hunger and providing essential community education and-
Order. Call the order, please. You know, address.
I am addressing you, because it is dumb and ignorant in order to continue, to continue, to, to continue to prevent me from acting as a Commissioner. I, I am a Commissioner, and so-
You made a motion, it died for lack of a second, because your motion is incorrect English. You think you're an English professor now, and you're not.
Okay.
So it died. Move on.
Can we, can we?
Fine for him, what, executing?
Yeah, we're drafting a letter, we're making a letter, we're creating the letter, and then I'm signing it. I'm ratifying it when I sign it. We're, she's executing it, we're executing it. I'll ratify it when I sign it.
This is the way it was always put on by the former clerk. Yes, for fourteen years, Ms. Godfrey, this is the terminology that she used.
You put, since I've been here over the last year, if you look up ratified, that's what I've been using for letters. They come over from the planning commission that way.
We're arguing over a word.
It's just, it's petty, it's ridiculous. We should have staff that works for us when we ask them to do-
I do work for you.
Ask someone to do, right now I have a letter right here, add, add the resolution for the journal action for number one, so it's recorded. Put, print number four, put it in my box. Missing pages one, two, five, six, eight, ten, and twelve of number twenty-eight, thirty-four. Print the red line agreement. Change the language.
And she responded to you.
I addressed all of those.
The reality is, I, I asked for these to be done last week while you guys were playing hooky. I was, I, I, notion-
No, you, no, you didn't.
Told you to correct those things last, last week.
Number one.
Anyway, whatever. Just be quiet and move on.
Don't tell me to be quiet. I'm the clerk, you can respect me.
You need to start respecting the employees, Commissioner French Co.
They need to do their jobs as instructed.
I do my job.
Right.
Item number nineteen, to execute a letter of support for the Society of St. Vincent de Paul's Visionary Initiative to establish a new hunger and community education center in the community. The organization's commitment to addressing hunger and providing essential community education and workforce development services is truly commendable, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of County Commissioners, to execute said letter.
Motion to approve. Second.
That's completely opposite.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
I, I, I will still vote for this, even though it's unfortunate that the clerk and the two commissioners don't understand English language, so yes.
Item number twenty is to remove from table item number twenty-eight, Commissioner's meeting agenda under the date of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, to allow Trumbull County employees to serve as poll workers and to be compensated with regular pay in accordance to O R C three five zero one point two eight F.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French Co?
Yes.
Okay, and then item twenty-one goes along with that to allow Trumbull County employees to serve as poll workers and to be compensated with regular pay in accordance with O R C three five zero one point two eight F.
A motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
We don't we don't talk-
Mr. Malloy?
We don't talk over discussion.
Well, you have to call for discussion. You have to address the chair and say discussion and then be recognized. Roberts rules of order.
Okay, to stop calling the roll until we have an opportunity for discussion.
Are you asking for discussion?
I am going to discuss this item. So I wanna I just wanna say that again, because I I wanna reiterate what I said two weeks ago, that this we will we have employees who are directors who will be using this and taking what? I don't know what the annual or hourly rate is, thirty, forty dollars an hour to sit and at the polling locations and get paid by county tax money for the purpose of working at the polls. It's it's not fair. Other poll workers do it in a way that is I can't remember what the actual it's like ten, ten. I can't remember what it is, but it's a very nominal pay, and I don't think it's fair to them to send county-paid employees out to the polls making that much money. Also, the I think it's most appropriate for them to expand their search on poll workers. Maybe they can start going to the Lions Clubs and other community organizations where they volunteer on a on a regular basis in order to find people who would customarily volunteer to work at the polls rather than sending them there on the county's budget. It would be it would be better if the state legislature, who allows this to happen, would actually maybe pay the poll workers a little bit more or authorize that rather than dumping it on the laps of the of the giving an opportunity for them to put it on us. So that's my comment.
Okay, this is the state law. Our state legislators, our state senators, and our state representatives passed this. The governor signed it. This isn't something we're creating here in Trumbull County. This is something that's done statewide. In fact, we're one of the only counties that have not been utilizing this during election. To me, elections are the most important thing we do. I'm speaking right now.
In some places, I just you you have-
It is a state law, Ohio Revised Code. There are many, many counties throughout the whole state of Ohio that are utilizing this. We have not been. We've been short on poll workers. Everybody watches the news and they talk about voter fraud. The best way to prevent voter fraud is eyeballs on ballots. The way to get eyeballs on ballots is to have poll workers there watching the ballots come in, watching them leave, watching how people are treated, watching if they're given a Democrat or Republican ballot, making sure the election process is fair and impartial. The more eyes on it, the less fraud. They're asking for eyeballs to be there to work the polls. I believe in the election process as important as our jury process is, where employees can go to jury duty. There are other civic duties that people have. But if you don't believe the election process is the most important thing we do all year long, there's a problem up here. We're elected officials up here. I, for one, want to make sure our election process is as smooth and as legal and as honest as it possibly can be. If there if this is one thing, that tool that the state legislature is giving us to utilize to make sure we're at maximum capacity of poll workers, I gotta be for it. It's an option. A private a private person can allow their employees to come and work there also and pay them if they want to. Just because they don't doesn't mean it's not unfair for everybody else. These workers build up vacation time. They build up time throughout the year. How they use their time i- is up to them. This is a civic thing with people that work for governmental body that are going to help the election process stay fair and impartial. I can't see how you can throw holes in anything involving that.
Okay, I want for for clarity, Trumbull County has never been deficient on the number of poll workers that they-
You're absolutely wrong. You're right. You should have been at the last two workshops. You are wrong. Edria can speak for that up here. Come on up.
Don't interrupt. She's already been up here to speak last week, and I was-
On the record, because if there's false-
Like a comment, you will be respectful. I'm so tired of you two bullies talking over me.
You were in the middle of a lie. We're not gonna let you perpetuate a lie.
So what? So she was here last or two weeks ago, and she spoke. And though they don't have the extra people, they still have had coverage.
Commissioner, I'm just the spastic election. We were short by the beginning of the morning. We do shuffle people around constantly.
So there has never been-
There has been. There hasn't been polls shut down because we're able to accommodate. But we run short. This is a large election. Every election is important, and I believe in this. And this is not something we pulled out of our hat or dreamed up in our heads. It's the Ohio Revised Code. It is statewide. Many, and I provided you with all the resolutions and different policies for it, no different than in-service stays, no different than the commissioners or myself going to conferences. You're paid for it. I don't believe we're gonna have fifty people or guts or heads of departments doing this, and this could always be rescinded.
Department had all-
All three of you. And she used her own time.
Well, then that's what people should be doing.
I thank you. If you have any other questions, let me know.
They can still exercise their hang on. They can still exercise their civic duty by taking of it by taking- I take. No, I was talking to him because he was-
Okay, I apologize.
They can still exercise their civic duty by taking off and doing that and using a vacation day or some of their leave time. We don't have to compensate them additionally for something that people already have the ability to do. That's my opinion. It's the opinion of a lot of people here in Trumbull County.
If you don't like it, I can give you the phone numbers of our state legislature, state senator. You can call on him and change the law. If you don't like the law.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco? Item twenty-two is to accept the resignation of Ms. Jennifer Schaefer, probationary telecommunicator in the Trumbull County nine-one-one department effective January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-three is to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel for the month of January, two thousand and twenty four.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four is to approve the proposed amendment number two to the Ohio Department of Youth Services subsidy grant fiscal year two thousand and twenty four and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign said amendment. Amendment number two is necessary for the purpose of realigning funds to further support youth programming needs allowable within the grant.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
I'm staying because I didn't see it in my packet.
Item number twenty-five is to adopt an amended resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds, the Land Reutilization Corp. slash Ween Demolition.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
I was just gonna read a little bit more of it. Whereas the land bank, I'm in the middle of the page. Whereas the land bank in the county entered into a demolition agreement on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two for the demolition of the structures located at three, four, seven North Park Avenue, Warren, Ohio. Also meant is the Ween Building, as it had been determined that the Ween Building was creating a public health nuisance.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
I just- Or discussion again, please. We've had a problem in Trumbull County with preventative maintenance. The Ween Building has completely been deteriorated, as have several other buildings in Trumbull County, to the point where it's costing potentially millions of dollars to replace elevators, roofs, and things that could be more affordably maintained if we would actually plan for preventative maintenance and grade the buildings. Since I've started, it's been three years of me trying to get the Board of Commissioners to agree to grade buildings so that we can better monitor and plan for preventative maintenance instead of costing millions of dollars and demolishing beautiful structures that were once beautiful. We should not be continuing down a path that's going to cause this to happen. And I, again, want to urge the commissioners to participate in supporting me on making sure that our buildings are graded so that we don't have other structures that need to be demolished that because they fall into disrepair like this one did.
For purposes of this building here, this was this predates all of us. When I got onto the board, this building was already vacant. So that has nothing to do with preventative maintenance by this board.
Okay, so there that I disagree with you because you are here and you've been here.
It was vacant.
Hang on. You've been here for quite some time and have been fighting against grading the buildings and making sure all the systems are documented as to how-
They are documented, and you do have preventative maintenance through our maintenance director.
No, we do not have any type of preventative maintenance.
Okay, that's your opinion.
It's not an opinion. The Trumbull County does not have the buildings graded. You we cannot go to one building and sit and look and see the last time-
Ask Phil Hart to grade of the building, and he'll tell you.
Stop.
And actually, Commissioner, actually, Commissioner, actually, Commissioner.
At a time. I'm I'm not done talking, Mauro. You've been here, and you've been part of the problem. It's been going on for years and years and years, and every we have had discussion ad nauseam where you guys just completely say, we have a maintenance director, and he knows in his head what's been done because he's been here so long. We do not have any plan for preventative maintenance.
I didn't say that.
When I first started here, listen to the end of our budget meeting. It is online. You will hear the entire discussion from this year. So when I when I first started that year, the H V As, the air condition went off. It was ninety-nine degrees in our building. They they spent probably a couple hundred thousand dollars more in order to put temporary fixes in the temporary fixes to keep the building quasi-cool.
Yeah, get get to your point quick, please.
Because this makes you look bad.
I can't hear these lies any longer.
It's not a lie.
Look, in Trumbull County, we've we-
I'm talking.
All right, come on.
In Trumb- in Trumbull County, we've gone for years and years.
When is it my turn to talk?
Well, when you're when you can sit down and be quiet and let me talk for-
But you've been taught. You've been monopolizing the conversation the whole time.
Interrupting the entire time.
My gosh, finish your point.
Go ahead. Say what you want to say, and then I'll I'll speak after you.
Finish your point.
I'll speak after you. Go ahead.
Finish your point.
I'll wait. You can't be quiet.
All right, let's move on. This has nothing to do with this agenda.
He doesn't want to speak.
You can talk about that at the end of the meeting if you like. I'll give you all the time in the world at the end of the meeting.
Preventative preventative maintenance is what has been missing in Trumbull County. That is the reason that we're demolishing the Ween Building, and it needs to be addressed by all three members of the Board of Commissioners, not just one, with the other two playing politics and trying to make it easy for staff who doesn't want to grade the building.
Mr. Hart, will you please address some of these issues?
He doesn't want to grade the building.
I don't think you need to.
He doesn't want to because he'll admit that there's no grading.
It's it's we we go down these rabbit holes and these these half-trues of what you're talking about. What we've done is, over the last, can I speak, please?
Commissioner Cantal Mesa now has the door.
Of what we've gone through in my nine years here in Trumbull County.
Putting out fires.
Can I speak, please?
Tired of you wasting the taxpayers' money on things like this.
We, over my my nine years here, we have lost the reduction in the local government fund, the loss of the MCO sales tax, the loss of the estate tax, cuts from the from the state government.
Nothing to do with the beginning.
The 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 sales tax was was at an all-time low. Our investments were in the toilet. We got the most-
Commissioner, speak, please.
Did this to me the whole time. How does it feel?
We got the most out of our-
See, this is what you do to me every single time I talk. How does it feel?
Can I finish at least a point? Can I finish a point? We have gotten the most-
All right, let's move on. I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
We've gotten the most useful life out of our assets as we possibly can on limited budgets. That's what we're supposed to do.
Commissioner, you're out of line.
We get the most useful life out of our assets, period.
It cost more. It costs the county more and the taxpayers more. It costs the taxpayers more to fix things once they're totally done. Let me make you a basic example.
And ridiculous. Your voice is being raised, and you're being hostile right now. I'm not having this discussion.
Of course you're not.
I've said my piece.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Okay, this is for item twenty-five for the amended resolution. Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-six is to enter into an amended agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the Trumbull County Land Reutilization Corp. The land bank is approved by ARPA Legal Counsel for the land bank to provide twenty-five percent of match funds required for Ohio Department of Development for its building demolition program. Amendment is necessary to correct the dollar amount of the match monies, and the Trumbull County Commissioners allocate the sum of two hundred sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and ten cents to the land bank.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion from the floor to cause our maintenance staff to grade all of the county buildings. So they can better plan for preventative maintenance.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Number twenty-seven, please.
Item twenty-seven is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Shaira Vasquez as a social service worker three effective Monday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Vasquez will be paid twenty dollars and five cents per hour with full benefits.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yesterday's agenda item said that she it was effective February twelfth. Did she already start working?
At the meeting, we corrected that. At the public meeting that you were invited to.
Mr. Still it was on the agenda. So did she start? Did she work Monday? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-eight is to exercise the county option for the one-year renewal of the contract awarded March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three with Lydon Oil Company for supplying gasoline and diesel fuel to Trumbull County. The contract extension is under the same terms and conditions as the original contract terms for the period commencing April first, two thousand and twenty-four through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'm gonna make a motion to table this because when the information was given to me, it was missing pages one, two, five, six, eight, ten, and twelve. And last week at the meeting where they didn't attend, I asked the clerk to get those things for me, and she still didn't provide those, and I'd like to be able to review.
I've given I've given you everything that I have.
Okay, well, then here's the problem then. If you've given me everything that you have, how can the Board of Commissioners approve something when it's missing pages one, two, five, six, eight, ten, and twelve of the contract? So here it is. It's missing those pages. So if that's all the county has, how could this be? See, here's page thirteen, and then it goes back to page eleven because it's missing twelve. Then it skips back to page nine because it's missing page ten. Then we have we have a number of missing pages. So how did the Board of Commissioners review it, the other two, if I'm trying to review it and I'm missing all these pages? Can we please table this so that you can find the missing pages so that we can actually review? Is this all that exists? You said this is all the county has?
Yes.
So the county has this, and it's missing. Will you take a look at that?
Including the backsides of the pages, the blank backsides?
There's nothing here.
Understand that.
I I um, okay, so here it is. I'll hold it up because evidently so this is there's a legal notice specifications, and then it goes to page three. Here's page three. There's no one and two.
That's because the first two are one and two.
Then there's no four, and then it goes to five. Then there's no six. It goes to seven. Then there's no eight. It goes to nine. There's no ten. Goes to eleven, there's no twelve, goes to thirteen. So I'm sure that the other Commissioners haven't reviewed this and it concerns me that we're approving something when this is all that I have. I'm just asking for. An opportunity to table this. My, I made a motion to table it so that we can find those missing pages and review it before we vote on it.
Has the prosecutor's office reviewed it?
Do you have the whole thing? Because I don't.
Samantha, Elton County Commissioner's Office. It seems to be a copying error. Weren't you here when that was first approved?
Yes.
It, it, so actually I don't have a copy of it and I would like a copy of it.
I don't make copies. I don't make copies. I don't have access to your copies. No.
So you, you reviewed it? But you don't have it.
I did not personally review it, no.
Prosecutor's office reviewed it though.
Prosecutor's office did.
An opportunity to review it because I don't have it and the same reason I didn't approve it last year on the journal. It says Frenchco nay was because of the same reason that they didn't give me a copy of it. So I'm looking to review things before I vote on them. That's a normal thing that we should be doing. And if you have that somewhere upstairs, could you send it down to us? Because evidently our office doesn't have it.
We don't keep copies of like that. We wouldn't just have a copy of everything that you guys have sent to us. For reference.
So who reviewed it?
Likely Bill.
So you can't speak to this, really?
No.
Bill was at the workshop yesterday and had no issue with it.
No, but it has been reviewed in our office.
The only bidder, it's the only bidder that's ever done it for years and years and years.
I mean, is it, it's not abnormal for us to.
What would you like?
Sorry.
The, the entire, that, that looks like the entire contract to me. It might be misnumbered, but it's the entire contract. What's missing? No, but what is missing? The content that is missing? I'm talking about the content that is missing in there.
It doesn't actually have any, it doesn't have anything that says that there's even an authority or an ability to renew it. And I was specifically looking for that because whenever you renew a contract, you have to be able to point to where it says that in the agreement. So that's what I started, I was digging through it, trying to find that at least, and I'm missing half of it. So.
It, it seems like there's a documentation error. I can't, can't speak to whether or not.
But it's been reviewed by the office.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have a motion on the table.
Yeah, the table it so that we can actually look at it. Because you guys didn't.
But not here in a second. The motion dies.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Have you read it?
The prosecutor has read it and they should be the ones advising us on that.
Have you read it?
The prosecutor's office has read the, and it's the same contract year after year. Lydon Oil is the only one who bids on it for about ten years straight, Commissioner.
Okay, so can I see it?
Hey, then ask the prosecutor's office to see it.
Office should have it. She should be disciplined for.
Why are you asking to see it on the voting day?
Ask the prosecutor's office.
Why didn't you ask yesterday?
You weren't here last week when it was on the agenda.
We had a whole week to look then.
Right.
Ask the prosecutor's office.
And, and I told her last week to make sure that.
Did you go to the prosecutor?
We just want to play gacha over here.
And I was not the clerk when that was put through, so perhaps it is misnumbered. I don't know.
You had, she had, the reality is she had a whole week extra to get this to me.
So did you.
The reality is, we've been approving it for ten years. It's the same contract we've been approving for ten years. Ten years, the prosecutor's office has looked at it and said yes. And they are the only bidder. So you are slowing up progress here.
There's nothing wrong with, there is something wrong when you just vote yes without reviewing things. And there's also something wrong when the staff.
I have attorneys for.
When the staff doesn't have a copy of what we're voting on in our Commissioners.
You're not an attorney. You're not the board's attorney.
Our, our staff is supposed to have a copy of these things here and we, she, if she's saying this is all we have, then it's missing, then it's missing it. Can you go back and, and get, and it's been a week. There's no reason not to have an entire document for, for, for review.
You can't even tell me what's missing in it. But, but what, how does it flow that it's missing? It could just be wrongly numbered.
Okay, it's missing pages.
I'm thinking it's the backside of the pages that are blanked that are the number. I think it's just numbered that way.
The backsides are blank, okay. Either way, we don't have it and how will I know what's missing if I don't have it? That was the dumbest question I think I've ever heard.
Okay, here's what you do when that happens. When you know that happens, go to the prosecutor's office and ask them before the meeting and come prepared.
Here last week, I actually had this on the, let's see.
Right, and you had a whole week to do something about it, a whole week.
Right, and I, and I waited for this to come and she just gave it to me yesterday.
Well, I think if you wait after three, four, or five days, you don't have it, maybe you would follow up yourself and do it.
Okay, I can't, what would be really great is if staff that refuses to work.
Let's move on.
Get written up and maybe they.
People out here, come on, let's move on.
They would realize that it's not okay to ignore their.
I don't ignore any of your requests.
Because then they would do it if there was actually.
She responds to every request and she sees us on them.
There is a consequence.
Yes, she does. I can provide them to you.
Then there would be a correction in behavior possibly, but hopefully.
Behavior?
Yeah.
What behavior? She doesn't have it.
Mesa, you moved, but I did not.
I seconded.
Okay, Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because the County Board of Commissioners doesn't have a full copy of the document we're voting on today. No, I haven't reviewed it either.
Item number twenty-nine is to adopt a resolution authorizing Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners. To apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement. On behalf of the County of Trumbull for planning, design, and/or construction of the Scoville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. Number five dash S dash sixteen.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number thirty is to adopt a resolution authorizing Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners. To apply for, accept, and enter into a water supply revolving loan account agreement on behalf of the County of Trumbull for planning, design. And/or construction of the State Road Water Regionalization Project, number two dash W dash twenty-three.
Motion to approve?
Second, the motion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirty-one is to approve the detailed drawings for the Bizetta and Mecca Wastewater Treatment Plant. Nutrient Reduction Project known as County Project Number Eight Dash S Dash Twenty, Bizetta and Mecca Townships.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number thirty-four is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute on behalf of Trumbull County. The sub grant award agreement. Sub grant number twenty twenty-three dash JG dash A zero one. Dash six four four six for the Tag Law Enforcement Task Force. The grant is effective for the period, period of January first, twenty twenty-four. Through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Total funding for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant through the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services. Is in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
So we have a problem with, most especially with the Sheriff's Department sending over things that are extremely late. I just want to put a message out. All of our department heads and all the other elected officials to make sure that your. Agreements and contracts come in ahead of the date that we're voting on them because this was. Effective a period that started on January first. And the deadline is three one, so they're just kind of rushing to get something done.
No.
Not notified that they won the grant until February eighth. The head of the tag unit was here yesterday and explained that to us in the workshop. He said it's not his fault that it's late. This is the period when they issued the grant, but they were not notified until February eighth that they won the grant. We did not have a meeting last week. That's why it's on here today. Well, he said in person.
He said it in a public meeting on the record. Yeah, he's lying.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Just please vote.
Investigated. I would love.
Investigated.
For destroying, for destroying evidence.
What are you talking about?
You know, like there's some kind of cozy.
Let's, let's stick to the agenda items. Come on.
Get away with committing crimes and then you.
Get away with committing crimes. There was no crime I committed, Commissioner. I did not destroy evidence. Please vote. This is a public meeting for this agenda.
Because I don't have any information. So that's what happened and it's months after we're approving it, so.
And it was for the public. This was extensively discussed at the workshop. And it's complete negligence.
Let's move on.
It is complete negligence.
Item number thirty-three is to authorize the donation of furniture from the Office of the Trumbull County Board of Health. As submitted to, to Warren Township. The furniture is being donated to the Warren Township trustees as it is not needed for public use. By the Board of Health and Warren Township is in need of office furniture and will pick up the furniture and deliver it to their offices.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Item number thirty-four is to remove from table item number nine. Commissioners meeting agenda under the date of January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. To enter into a water service area agreement with the City of Niles. For Trumbull County's Howland Public Water System and the Mineral Ridge Public Water System. This agreement shall provide the terms for bulk water supply for both systems. Located in Howland and Weathersfield Townships and a small service area in Southern Bizetta Township. The existing agreement executed on February nineteenth, two thousand and four. Is set to expire on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. And thirty-five is to go along with that to enter into a water service area agreement with the City of Niles. For the Trumbull County Howland Public Water System and Mineral Ridge Public Water System. This agreement shall provide for. Provide the terms for bulk water supply for both systems located in Howland and Weathersfield Townships. And a small service area in Southern Bizetta Township.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Her, her, um, Robert Charles of Order. But an abstention has to, has to be. An abstention has to be posed with why she's abstaining. Is that not correct? Yes, per, per the prosecutor's office. If you abstain, you have to say why you're abstaining.
Item number thirty-six is to authorize the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to join with the Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney. To file an application with the Trumbull, Trumbull County Court of Common Pleas. For the appointment of Attorney Thomas Nader. From the law firm of Nader and Nader as legal counsel. For the Trumbull County Engineer in connection with legal advice and counsel as the engineer's statutory duties relating to the proposed Kimberly Clark Project in Trumbull County. Including all related legal actions.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number thirty-seven is to authorize the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to join with the Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney. To file an application with the Trumbull County Court of Common Pleas for the appointment of Attorney George R. Sarkis. From the law firm of Russell and Andrus. As legal counsel for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners and Trumbull County Planning Commission. In connection with legal advice and counsel as to their statutory duties relating to the proposed Kimberly Clark Project. In Trumbull County, including all related legal actions.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Item number thirty-eight is to receive and place on file. The November and December twenty twenty-three monthly financial reports for the Trumbull County Tourism Bureau.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number thirty-nine is a routine liquor permit transfer. From Trum Kelly Limited, doing business as Mini Food Mart in Weathersfield Township to Manet Core Inc., doing business as Mini Food Mart in Weathersfield Township.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
And item forty is to request that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners examine the circumstances set forth in O R C five 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 three point zero two. And a found status factory established by resolution, the remaining six hundred feet dead end of Allison Avenue. Beginning at the center line of Woodside Drive and extending east six hundred feet to the end of pavement. Into the Champion Township Road System for the public convenience and welfare in accordance with O R C. Five 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 three point zero one. Trumbull County Engineer has submitted a letter of examination.
Motion to approve?
This is another example of not understanding English language. The Board of Commissioners cannot make a motion to request that the Board of Commissioners do something. So if someone wants to correct that language, which I brought up the first time it came around. And again, if the clerk wants to ask for advice on how to phrase things, I'd be happy to help. But if the attorney in the room would want to look at this number. And, and say it in a proper way. I, I understand what they're trying to accomplish here, but it's. Completely wrong.
Samantha, Elton County, what you're talking about is really semantics. It's an administrative matter. It doesn't change anything.
It's a motion to. Root, to approve that the Commissioners request something.
It doesn't change the intention of this.
Motion. And so our office wouldn't have any, we can advise you one way or the other. That's administrative.
I know that, I think that even maybe someone offered to help you change the language because it was.
I don't think you're hearing her.
I'm, I'm a professional. I, I have, I understand.
Well, you called her up and you, for her advice and she told you and you didn't accept it.
Write it in whatever stupid way you want. We kind of understand that it's okay, but we're a Board of Commissioners. We're the executive body.
Written in a stupid way?
Yes, read it again. We're making, you just said that you're approving a motion for the, a request that we do something. It could be, it's, it's incorrect.
Do you realize that the voters in Trumbull County and the people in Trumbull County are looking at this and saying, what is she talking about? She's talking about semantics and grammar? We need to get things done as a board.
Motion of us to accomplish something, not to request something.
We're fighting over, over the use of a word when this is clear. This is clear. The prosecuting attorney is telling you it's clear. But I could tell you till you're blue in the, till I'm blue in the face and it won't matter.
Ridiculous.
Okay, then, then vote no. Vote no.
And, and this is because the clerk, just again, she would actually communicate. Oh my, do things correctly. Just, it's so stupid. I even, I even called the engineer on this one. I was like, did you, why is it written this way? He didn't send it over.
It was sent over by the Champion Township Fiscal Officer. This is the way it was sent over.
It was sent over to, I read it and it said, it was sent over to request that the Board of Commissioners do that. That means you have to write it. The Board of Commissioners approves. Such and such. It's not. Like you can't make that connection. They're requesting from us to do something and then you put it on that way.
I don't have a motion.
It doesn't change the substance of the, the. Agenda item. She's what? You said she's so dumb.
All right, just move forward. Do we have a motion?
On the, on that?
Yes. Motion to accept or not?
Motion to accept is written.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I, I cannot. I would like to be able to approve. A motion that says that the county is accepting this road. This was completely done and written wrong. a motion that says that the county is accepting this road. This was completely done and written wrong, so I'm gonna just abstain. Or I'll just vote no. And so it's just ridiculous. I just wish that we had brighter people here at the county.
Yeah, that concludes our regular business for the day. Anybody have anything for the good of Trumbull County?
Supposed to have collaboration software that, um, I suggested. Put it on, put it on the agenda several times. Um, I think Mara ultimately voted yes on it at some juncture and, uh, I guess our I T department was working on it and we're, we still don't have it. Alls we have are just emails coming in, things coming in splintered, half of pay, half of contracts. And it would be all solved if we had an, uh, collaboration software where we had every item listed with a support.
Can you speak into the microphone, Commissioner? The people can't hear you online and people that are watching can't hear you, so it's not going to be recorded for the record.
So I felt that that's well taken that we can't use the, the, the recording for the meeting. But that's just a problem that we said that we were going to address and I don't know what's going on with. Are we there yet? Or we should be closer. I mean, it's been three years.
I didn't have a mic, sir. Please.
Commissioner, we, we are working on a process right now. This is Tim Hanfor, Director of I T for Trumbull County. We are working on a process. And we're, we're almost there at that point to get, get, to take full advantage of the, the software that we purchased. We're gonna do it right the first time. We're not gonna mess around and come up with a solution that's not gonna be perfect out of the gate. Now, I, I will say this, I'm gonna request, we're getting uh, calls from the taxpayers of Trumbull County asking for you to use your microphone. So if we can have that, that would be great.
It's not even pointed towards.
Uh, yeah, because when I pulled the pages, because I'm, we just got our agenda five minutes before the meeting.
Okay.
So it's kind of hard to go through my notes from yesterday.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to bring that up. There are taxpayers that are actually calling in. So, thank you.
So again, is it going to include, how I, I've been trying to get this done for the last several years to where we'll be able?
Correct. Oh, yeah. Definitely. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so you have the floor.
Del Kuchta. Two weeks ago, Commissioner Frenchco asked you why you didn't use the microphone. You never answered me. And there's some very important people in the back of the room that'd like to hear what you got to say. Including myself.
There are twenty-five seats in the front.
Jason Tedrow, Hubbard Township. Uh, I'm actually the newest trustee over in Hubbard Township.
Welcome.
Do you guys care if I kind of come up and hand you something?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So as I'm sure you're well aware, we've been working on some issues with Colbert Dam lately in Hubbard Township. Uh, I was previously gonna come out to you guys to ask for some funding, uh, but I know I had a request to get some information from the owners of the property. I provided that on page one of this packet as well as the, uh, estimate that we received from M S Consultants. Uh, also an email correspondence from the owner's attorney indicating that at some point, it sounds like the A G's office, Attorney General's office, is on board with, uh, potentially allowing us to explore, uh, basically repair that dam versus breach. Uh, it sounds like they do want to establish a meeting with some county officials. Uh, the owners of the property, O D N R, myself, and, uh, some other local officials. So I wanted to come here today on kind of, uh, as the spokesman representative for, uh, my two co-sponsors, uh, who are, uh, the Kyler Foundation as well as the Hubbard Youth Coalition to request funding for, uh, the studies on the dam repair. Uh, as well as my community as a whole. Uh, it's, this is a dam that's been part of our community for a hundred and seven years. Uh, one thing we want to kind of do here is work towards a goal of preserving the lake and transferring that property into a a public entity, whether that be a nonprofit or a Metro Parks or something along those lines. Uh, I believe the owners have listed on the, uh, number three on their front page that they are on board with potentially exploring the, the sale of the property, which I don't believe is something that they're dishonest about. They were previously gonna sell this property, uh, and basically have it transferred to the Metro Parks before. We have identified a potential purchaser for down the road and I've actually gone out on my own and spoke to a couple nonprofits as well as went to the Metro Parks to ensure that we can kind of secure this as a, as a, not just an asset to Hubbard Township, but it's Brookfield Township because that property extends into there. But also, uh, Trumbull County as a whole, especially on the eastern side where we don't have much. I'd love to see this property work towards a conservation effort. Uh, I would like to thank Morrow and Nikki for coming to our meeting that we had, uh, concerning the lake. I know Denny wasn't able to make it, but I know, uh, I, I know you're big on conservancy with a lot of your stuff. Uh, I've been speaking a lot with our, uh, local conservation club regarding this too, since they're, they're close to the property, but the estimate was for two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven and seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Um, I'm hoping the Commissioners would see fit to support us in this. I, I do want to be open and honest. I have reached out to O D N R and I haven't received one piece of information back yet on if this money will actually count towards the local conservation in the future. Uh, I know I have secured with the owner, they are gonna have a significant investment into the demolition of the dam. Um, they're willing to put that money forth towards, uh, the local match at some point as well as some, potentially some extra funds on top of that. Um, I think that's gonna help us work towards the goal of achieving what I think everybody in our community as well as Brookfield or at least the majority would like to see, the preservation of that property. Uh, create it more of a public entity and stuff like that and work towards, uh, preserving it. Do you guys have any questions for me? I've been elbow deep into this.
Is this a formal ask of ARPA money or is this just of?
A formal ask personally, uh, I, I, this is my first time doing it, so I did something a little different. I apologize, but no, it's, it's a formal request. If you guys have any questions
Okay.
or if there's any contingency, uh, related to this, I completely understand. I want to make sure the taxpayers are protected at the same time as a, as a public official now myself. I'll definitely look at that as a, as a concern at times. Uh, it is the Kyler Foundation and, uh, the Hubbard Youth Coalition. And there are some, like I said, I have spoke to a couple nonprofits that would be interested in this as well as I've gone and spoke to the Metro Parks as well. Uh, to see where their interest is. I know there was some concern with the rails, the trails and somewhere where their funding is at and stuff like that, but I wanted to make sure that I had some other potential options to kind of make sure that we could get this open to public access at some point, make it more of an asset to the entire community and county.
But as of right now, it is not public access. People cannot trespass on the property, on the dam, in any way on the shoreline or on the dam.
No, but, uh, as they've provided in their, uh, cover letter to this packet, they are willing to sign permission for us to do any studies and anything else associated.
Right, so they'll allow us to come and fix the dam, but they're not allowing the public to utilize the lake or utilize the shoreline at this point.
Not at this point.
And, and they say in here on number three, if we come in and we fix the dam for them.
Yes.
They would be open to selling the property or granting property access to the public. However, they reserve the right to make determination. So we technically would come in, fix the dam. He puts a million dollar house on it with a lake view and tells everybody, get the hell off of here. Thanks for the dam repair and we're out.
I, I.
No agreement other than this gentleman's agreement here that he's open to possibly selling it if we fix it for him.
Yes, and like I said, he previously already had an agreement that was rescinded, uh, through Trust Public Lands to purchase that property and donate it to the Metro Parks. So I don't believe it's gonna be a hindrance that he's against doing this. He's additionally put forth any engineering that they've already performed to give us all that information so that we can actually reduce some costs and everything like that where possible without having to do, uh, redundant work, so.
I, I would feel more comfortable if the dam was already in public entity's hands somehow that we know
I.
that it's, it's gonna be utilized the way we want it and not a private individual's property.
Oh, I completely agree with the concern.
And it wouldn't be just, it would be filled out in the realty contract.
We get caught in a catch-twenty-two, I believe, on that, that scenario because nobody wants to purchase it with the liability.
Right.
So we run into a problem and even with the contingent, what do you do in a purchase agreement? Because the value of the property probably definitely greatly varies, whether you have a fifty-seven acre lake or if you don't.
That background in real estate, you would have to do an as-is appraisal and then an as-improved, as-improved appraisal. And so if it is sold, it would be based on the purchase price of the as, as is, as opposed to the as-improved. You know what I'm saying? So that's, that would be the only way to go forward with that in a fair way so that they're not.
Well, this is for studies so that we can figure out what's required, which is gonna affect what that, what that appraisal value would likely be. Uh, as well as be able to go back to the state. So without having the studies done, so we can establish a conceptual plan, this, the, the.
I mean, you could, you could do an appraisal at any point in time or a certain date prior to that.
Yeah.
So you could down the road do one effective such-and-such a date before anything was done and then do one after the fact. But I think that there, there is a way to address those concerns with very tight contract language with the real estate. So I know that he has concerns about that. So do I.
Oh, absolutely. A hundred percent.
Be good, good for that if, if the language is correct. And then I have another question.
Yes.
That is, um, how many other projects does over town to, because I don't believe that you've had any eligible product, projects. I think the road one wasn't eligible. We had like ARPA requests from your township before you forgot this fairly.
Yes.
And, and then I don't know that any of them actually moved forward.
I think the only one we were gonna be able to pursue moving forward was the restrooms. Uh, I know we had a salt dome that was rejected. Uh, we, we did have some additional funds for our road department that for the first time in eleven years, I think were rejected. So we are running on some reduced funds on that side of it, but this is something, like I said, I wanted to come to you guys more as, as a private citizen. We did pass a motion last night though as a trustee that all the trustees are in full support of kind of this project moving forward. Uh, like I said, it's, it's been a major asset to our community or at least our landscape. Uh, back in the day, it was owned by Youngstown Sheet and Two where they had a lot of their parties and stuff like that. So a lot of the older members of the community have had time to spend on the lake and stuff like that. And we want to get it back to that and like I said, make it an eastern asset to Trumbull County as well as Hubbard and Brookfield. Three, or it's two hundred? Uh, I believe it's just over a hundred thousand dollars. I don't remember the exact total.
For the restroom project?
Yes. Yes.
I.
Yeah.
So I know you guys are gonna be getting a lot of, uh, probably requests and conversations regarding some of these dams. Now that we know there's three of them available in Trumbull County, they're, uh, up for some of these federal funds through FEMA. I wanted to make sure I got here, started the conversation with you guys, put in a request. If there's some more information you guys want to have, sit down, discuss. I'm completely all for that. I want to make sure that we do something that's the right thing as well for everybody.
If the township wanted to swap out what they're ineligible projects for this one, to get an opinion on it, I'd be interested in doing that.
Sure. Absolutely. Well, well, which ineligible, you mean the salt dome project? Yeah.
Which I believe was around two hundred and fifty, so it would be a little bit short of this, but it would definitely put us in that range.
Yeah. Uh, I'm okay with it.
I would like, I, I'd like to do that because it's not like, I mean, it is a new application, but at the same time, every township has the ability to put them in.
Yeah.
And if the only one that you're doing is much less than some of the other towns have done, then I'm okay with swapping that.
That funding for, towards our community, basically. No, I, I greatly appreciate that.
That way we can end up with a legal opinion from our ARPA people to find out if it's eligible.
It's eligible.
And then what, and then she'll also, sometimes we can ask her to help us figure out how.
How it can be eligible.
Yeah, and I, I've spoke to the owners and I, I'm a big one on honesty and I think that's why I've gotten the level of support from them that we haven't gotten before. And I've told them at every turn, hey, you can do this with us or without us. And they've chosen to do it with us. They want to do it just to benefit our community as well. So they don't want to see that go away, you know? You, you see how, what happened to Yankee Lake years ago and Gerard Lake and stuff like that. And it, it's sad to see some of those resources go away. I think we're kind of special in the, in the, in the Midwest around here with the number of reservoirs.
You're, you're saying get rid of the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar request for the bathrooms at their admin building?
No, I believe it was the, uh, replacement for the, uh, almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we lost for the.
Yeah, but you have a request right now still for the bathrooms for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'm not saying to eliminate it. We've had other townships that have gotten four hundred thousand. One of them got eight hundred thousand, you know? So I don't think this is out of line if we could find out if it's eligible.
Auditor Yoder?
Trumbull County Auditor Martha Yoder, just, um, I am, I don't have my spreadsheets up here with me. And you know, it's very complicated because we've had lots of changing around. I am not sure, to be honest with you, if that salt dome money got frozen or not. Remember, we froze some things. So, I mean, I'm fine, you know, obviously all of this is your decision, but I just wanted you to be aware of it, that it's the, the totals that I've given you. If it's frozen, it's in the blue that, of the one that I give you. Is that from yesterday? Thank you. So that wasn't frozen, um, and I don't have the amount on here because we didn't freeze it. But it, the, the, um, salt storage is not included. The, the denied request is not the money, uh, the amount is not frozen, so it's not included in the total for the yes sheet. So if you want to do that, you have to understand that it's actually going to increase that amount that's on the yes sheet. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. If you do want it to go forward, if the, if that's the consensus of the board, I will add it to the sheet, but I also will need a new request formally done as an ARPA request. I'll be glad to send him the, the paperwork for that and he can send it back to me if I can get a card from him. I'll be glad to do that and put it there. If you guys want it as on the list, I need to know where it needs to go on the list. And you need to be aware that it's going to increase the bottom line amount that we have right now.
Because they're having a lot of problems out there trying to figure out the what's eligible, what's legal, what's not. I'd rather move that up to the, they could call them and, and help the community find out as well.
So on the, the sheet that you handed to me that I gave to you guys yesterday, you currently have about, let's see, you have six outstanding. Unfortunately, they're not moving very fast. She is, I do know on those, she's having some back and forth with people. If you want it to go next or for us to send it as soon as I get it, I can do that.
Good for them to be able to know.
Sure, and I understand that. It, that's clearly up to you guys as Commissioners, as up to, I'm sorry, up to the board as Commissioners. But I, I just need to know what you want me to do. That's all.
What, what would we be bypassing? I don't have the sheet.
Okay, so the, the next request on the list, the next couple are McDonald Fire Department for P P E and emergency. Um, the big one on here is the ambulance for Champion Township. And the reason I say it's the big one is we have other ambulance requests further down the line. And that one is going to be an indicator of what, you know, what those, the future of those requests will be, right? If that's, if that's ruled ineligible, we may have to have some conversations with people. If it's ruled eligible, we may want to throw those back to the top of the list. And, um, and I hadn't mentioned this because we're moving a little slow on it, but.
Where's the other, where's the other, uh, ask for the restrooms?
Going to, how long, what's your deadline for your grant application to determine what your income is going to be and the formal?
This year, it's the twenty-ninth of February, so I submitted the pre-application for that, but their funds won't be available well into next year.
What is it? So it's this year, you have to be able to know.
So I, I did, I did submit the pre-application for the FEMA grant. It would require less money, but that's gonna be over a year out before any of that funding's distributed. So that's why I wanted to come forward so we could potentially move forward on the project and hopefully get this ball rolling so that we can get the state on board, figure out if it's financially feasible for everybody so that we can bring an asset in the community.
Okay, so the thing is, is whenever you're submitting a, a grant application and you're showing what your match is, you have to have a resolution or, or an organization to take up official action to, to show that that match money is potentially available.
Yep.
And so if that's due.
We're not doing the grant. Actually, O D N R is doing the final grants. Uh, they just required a pre-submission.
When, when are they doing the final?
February twenty-ninth is the deadline.
So I think just by doing this kind of work, that the Board of Commissioners needs to make a motion and approve today that contingent upon the eligibility so that you have it to put in your grant application or is you're not gonna be able to?
Well, that's for.
I don't know if we can do that. We're having the same problems right now with Mosquito Lake with the, with the aquatic vegetation. We don't know. It's been two months now. We still can't figure out if it's legal for us to work with O D N R to do the plant mitigation on the water. So. So this is a private company, a private entity.
Actually, actually FEMA requires only a sponsorship and the sponsorship is through the nonprofits that we're going to do this through. So that gives the, uh, the accounting for the funds. So even though it's a private entity, it is available for the, for the FEMA grant.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is we still haven't got a ruling back on whether we can even give ODNR money to clean up Mosquito Lake. I don't understand how in the world that would fly for us legally to be able to give money to fix a dam on private property with no agreement at all, that it's going to be public, that we're going to have any say so when it, when it's done. We have, we have about twenty sportsman's clubs in the county.
Yeah.
And almost every one of them has their own dam and lake. And I know like Trumbull, Rod and Young just fixed their own dam. They had a problem there and they, they had to fix it to retain it or they lost the dam. And we're going to get pushed back, I believe, from a lot of people if we spend their tax dollars to fix a dam that we have no agreement that it's going to become part of the Metro Park system. We have no agreement, public's going to be able to fish there. We have no agreement that anyone can hunt there, no agreement that anybody can ever utilize it again. And literally, like I said, we could put millions of dollars in this thing, fix it, and the owner could say, thanks, turn around and sell it to a private entity and someone's got the best view in Trumbull County, lakefront view that we paid for.
I, I think that that's going to.
It would be contingent. I mean, we would, we would never.
Well, let's see the contingencies and then let's get that cart before the horse or the horse before the cart here.
Application you have, you're going to have to have some committal from the body to include in your application. And, and if you don't have that by February twenty eighth, I'm, I'm a little concerned. So I'd like to be able to put something so that they have that in their application.
Well, we don't have to do it today if it needs to be done by February twenty eighth. We still have time.
And if you guys like, they wrote that, that granted that letter was from their attorney, but he says there's any questions, stuff like that, like I said, I don't want to put anybody in top.
ODNR.
Uh, ODNR actually does the final application.
So, so.
ODNR, what they need, uh, journal action to say in order to include our conditional commitment as match.
Yeah. So I, I just want to clarify something, two things, first of all, and I don't want to get too, too far on it because Commissioner, uh, Cantal Mesa, you asked me about where the other grant, other request was. It's number nine in the, in the queue. And just so that you guys understand, you moved that to the yes list as a replacement. That's why that money was not frozen. You moved the, the restroom request as a replacement for the other request that was denied on twelve five. So that's, that's for that. But the other thing is the money, it just, I, because I'm not sure it's completely clear. The money that they're asking for is actually for a study. It's not for the replacement of the dam itself. And I wasn't sure that everybody was.
But that goes hand in hand with what, what the outcome of this is.
Sir, absolutely. I understand it. But I think, and it, and I, I get, I, I just wanted, because it sounded a little bit like we were going a little further ahead on the discussion. Sure, I understand. Right.
The commissioners or the township is using that, they can count that as impact.
For the local match. I get, I get what you're saying. I understand. I understand what, what you're saying. But I, but it sounded a little bit like we were getting a little far afield, far afield and that this was because we're talking more about the, the dam replacement, which is obviously the eventual outcome of this. But I think what you're asking for, just to be clear, is the money for the study.
Because that's what is going to allow us to know what we have to do.
Well, here's the thing, is it, is it, we can sit here and say yes or no, but that, that would be negligent on our part, I think. We need to run it by our legal, uh, all these, all these different scenarios to make sure that what we're doing with public funds is an allowable use, you know?
So, so commissioners, uh, what I'm asking from you to know is, um, one, do you want me to just go ahead and get the request i- in the format of an ARPA request? Do you want me to put it in the place of the restroom request? Because the restroom request was initially a replacement for the salt dome request, and that would be number nine. Do you want it there or do you want it higher?
That would be up to the trustee, which would he rather have? Would he, would he want the restroom to go first and then see what happens with this or was this type precedent?
On behalf of the township, I was actually requesting on behalf of our nonprofits. I know.
Okay, yeah. So the nonprofit will fill the grant application out?
Yes.
Okay.
This isn't a, a township request. Like I said, when I initially came up, this is on behalf of the cosponsors. I know. Yes, a recommendation from the township that we're in full support of this.
I, I don't think it matters where it is in the queue necessarily. We, we need to get the, the legal aspect of the contingency figured out first, if, if you could.
The queue is.
I'm talking about an opinion from our prosecutor as well.
Sure. So, so why don't, why don't you do this? Go ahead and, and ask for that opinion and we'll put it on hold. I won't put it, I won't do anything with the ARPA right now. If they would like to go ahead and fill out the application so they have it and I can have it on the commissioner drive and put it aside for now. I'm fine with that. Whatever you guys want me to do, I'll do. I just need to know what I'm supposed to do.
I think the, the quickest way to give an opinion back would be through, um,
But the, the opinion that that you're requesting from the outside law firm, that they are engaged to just determine if it is eligible under ARPA. And I don't think that, unless I'm misunderstanding Commissioner Cantal Mesa, that that's what he's looking at. He is wondering if we should be able to, if the, the county should be even considering this without the contingency. And so that is what, not whether it's eligible or ineligible under ARPA, but whether it's advisable as for the county to do that. Now you could do that concurrently if you want to spend that money on the attorney, but on the outside attorney, or you could do it one after the other very quickly. And which is why I said, if you are looking at doing this, if our attorney, if the prosecutor says to go forward, my advice would be go ahead and have him submit it because then if the prosecutor says yes and you guys want to move forward, I have it. I have it.
I agree.
So I'm fine with that.
Okay, let's, that sounds like the plan.
All right.
Honestly.
Yeah, I understand.
And then you submit that, or not you, but the nonprofit or whoever submitting it as soon as possible anyway.
Yeah, I mean, she's been, we've done a lot of legwork already in the, in the last, basically this has come about in six weeks. Uh, so hopefully we're making a lot of headway. I think we're going to continue to do that. We're trying to conserve as many uh, taxed dollar resources. I know I recently seen Gerard was going with an outside firm. They're spending three thousand dollars a month. We've tried to do this internally and try to do it officially responsible to the sport as well.
The other thing that I think is worth mentioning, whenever we get these, uh, opinions through ARPA Legal Council, as part of the Board of Commissioners being a member of the Council of Governments, we are allowed to share all of our opinions with every township and any other participant. So these, these opinions aren't just for us. It's if a township, a village, anyone who's a member of the Todd needs that information, we have an agreement that that's shared. So I just wanted to put that out there too, in case there's another community that's here or watching. All of our opinions, uh, if you're part of our fog are able to be shared with you for advice. For your community.
Um, if you just give me, uh, contact information.
Absolutely do that.
And I will provide all you guys with contact information for all in the meeting. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. I'll answer anything I can. I said, I, I'm even fine if there's a contingent thing in the, in the end that it's something we still have to work towards.
Right.
That if, if you give us money, we'll give it back basically if nothing, nothing comes through on it. So.
I think that's the only way it's going to happen.
Oh, I, I completely agree. And like I said, uh, we're, we're, I, I've been looking at the other dam issues in, in, in the area and stuff like that. Gerard's owned by, uh, a community, uh, basically the local government, they're in support of this. You have the one in, uh, uh, Warren Township, Levisburg. You know, I know the Metro Parks is on board with demolishing that dam. So you have an owner that's not in support. I'm glad that we do have an owner that's in support and we do want to get this into where it's more of a public use thing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jeff Ford, Viana Township. It was brought up to, uh, me the other day that during a workshop meeting, I was involved in a conversation, uh, involving Ms. Frenchco and then I won call. I was the acting supervisor dispatcher that night. I've been employed there for twenty-eight years. An acting supervisor dispatcher between fifteen and twenty-eight and also trained many people there. A long time ago, there was a comment made why we can't hire people or keep people there. Last week's incident involving you, Ms. Frenchco, is one of them. Who is your boss? Who is your boss, Ms. Frenchco? Part of the reason is you don't answer to anybody. Okay? As it was said, if I talk to somebody like that, I would be fired. Correct? Or did you not hear the meeting yesterday? The citizens in the county as well as the employees, your clerk, this Alex are tired of the way you put them down. You call them stupid. I've heard you called Denny fat before. Again, if I did that to any of the people that I work with, what would happen to me? I'm asking you as you, my boss, a commissioner, what would you do to me if I called people fat and stupid and everything else? What would you do? You, your microphone works because earlier you're like this and everybody in the back heard. But any other time during a meeting, it's this, nobody can hear you. I'm appalled. I'm upset at your actions as a boss and as a county commissioner, the way you talk to people. And I believe your email, if I can remember correctly, sent today was you feel you did nothing wrong. You're in support of dogs. I want to know why you feel you had the right to talk to me on the phone that day the way you did when I told you I had an emergency going on. Can you answer that or are you just going to sit up there and be quiet the whole time? Commissioner Cantel Malasa and Malloy, I'm asking that something be done about this. Enough is enough. I'm not just speaking on behalf of me, but the other employees too. I feel you owe an apology, not just to myself, but to my current employees at nine one and everybody in the county for your actions and the way you speak. You don't have a problem holding other people accountable. Now it's time you be held accountable by somebody. I'm not sure who your boss is, but I'd like to find that out because you need put in control.
Do you want to respond?
We can't hear you. Again, use your microphone like you did before, but everybody heard you then. If you're intimidating with your phone, I really don't care. You're the only one that has to have a phone because that's the only thing the facts love. What'd she say about me?
Microphone, please.
I gotta take a breath. I'm sorry. Um, hey, Anderson from Warren Township, um, here today. And trustee Yoho and trustee Eddie Anthony is also here with me. And I'm just going to read this because I'm not a public speaker. So, uh, this is about the Levisburg Dam. We, as a board of trustees and our residents, have been trying for the past two years to express our concerns regarding the removal of the Levisburg Dam. We have been told that our concerns have been unmerited and their voices have pretty much fallen on deaf ears. It's been very discouraging since we as a community will have to live with the effects of this damn removal. We have been told several times that the dam belongs to Metro Park and they are worried about the danger of someone drowning there. We understand that this is a liability for them. So we are here today to discuss some other liability issues that our residents have brought to our attention in hopes that you as county commissioners will consider. We as trustees have been in contact with a consulting firm to look at the big picture here and to look at other alternatives. In their study of a possible dam removal, they have brought up a few other liabilities that we feel should be considered. Number one is the effect this dam removal may have on the roadway, West Market, which runs next to the dam. In their study, they found that the high volume of water rushing over the dam keeps the embankment saturated. Once this dam is removed, the firm soil will not be stabilized and could affect the safety of this road. If this were to happen, we feel that there may be a liability there for damaging a major roadway which runs to the bypass. They also have a concern for the number of well waters in that area that removing the dam and lowering the upstream pool level could negatively impact private drinking water wells in the area. I can tell you that when the prison was built and they started moving dirt for the buildings, many of us felt the effect in our well water, some even dried up. Luckily, the county ran the water line down Burnett Road to Denman Towers. So some of us were able to tap into county water. But others on the block still do not have access to clean drinking water. So this could be another liability issue. Also, we have another environmental issue. It was said that there will be no danger to aquatics in the river. We have a resident who is brought to our attention that there are clams in the Mahoning River which are on the endangered species list. There is a deep concern that lowering the depth and width of the river, which they said will happen, may affect their survival. I have some documentation on this matter I would like to present to you. We as a board feel we have been forced to contact this consulting firm to assist our community with facts about this possible removal. As you can see, there are many liability issues with this removal, not just a fear of drowning if someone goes over the dam. There are alternatives other than removal which would alleviate this fear that Metro Parks has about the liability. We fear the safety of West Market Street being impacted during removal is a liability impact on well waters for residents and endangered species in Mahoning River. So as you can, can see, we believe there are other liability factors with the possible removal of the Levisburg Dam. And we hope you will help to look at other alternatives. In closing, contacting this consulting firm has become a financial issue which we as a township did not expect to have to undertake. I have a proposal from this firm and we would appreciate it if you would say, take some time to look it over and we are requesting that you may consider assisting us with financial help with legal fees. So I have the proposal, I'll give them to you after the meeting and the information about the endangered species. And thank you for giving me this time. Pardon? Yeah, I, they're from the consulting firm.
It's, uh, alternatives.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
So, so I know that there's alternatives to the removal. I have since talked to the director of the Parks Board. He's willing to look at alternatives. He had told me that in person.
Good.
Um, so I, I said, have you received any of the information about alternative, alternatives to the removal? And he said, no.
You can give him a copy of that if you want. We just got that. I mean, we, pardon?
Yes. Yeah, he was in the office the other day.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, but I've talked to the director. I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
Brought up the subject.
Well, Zach Zavet has a lot of input with that, so. But it is going to have to be a board decision.
Right.
Yeah, we understand that.
I would suggest going to one of their meetings, giving, giving this to Zach and then.
Well, we, we had a meeting about a year ago and you were all there and we invited all five members. And Denny wasn't, yeah. I'm sorry, Commissioner. And, uh, so, you know, we had a good turnout, community was there, but we invited all five board members and none of them came. So it's not that we can't work with them. It's just that there's not been an outreach.
So maybe they have their next regular scheduled meeting. You can go and give them the information for all.
Well, we are having a, uh, meeting because you suggested it
Yeah.
last time you met here on the twenty-first of February at the Township Administration Building. And they are invited to come too, along with the community and.
It would be better, I think, just by, because I have the experience that last time too, that you took it to them at their public meeting because when you invite them, they didn't show up.
Well, we can look at that. So, okay. Thank you.
Good morning. Or afternoon, whichever.
Afternoon.
Deborah Roth, I'm Warren Township. Again, the trustees have requested some support from you guys. These studies are necessary, in my opinion, and in our community's opinion, to, again, provide us a sense of security as we believe that the removal of the dam is going to pose a public urgent health hazard, and we've been in that before. Several of the commissioners in the past have said that they would assure us, and studies should be done, to make sure that our health was going to be protected. And that's the real avenue that we want to pursue, is to get those studies done. So we would appreciate your support in that effort. Then nothing is left up to chance. The other question I want to pose is, can you, as a board of commissioners, ask Trumbull Metro Parks to stop proceeding with this until the studies are completed? You know, we've talked about injunctions, but has anyone ever thought to just ask them if they will do that?
They have motion here that the board of commissioners would read us in the letter requesting that it's... That they wait until a study is done.
Because I don't disagree with that. I just, it holds... Yeah, no, it holds, but it just keep in mind that that is not... You know, they have their own board, and they can still go about it however they need to. And I think we've publicly stated our, you know, I have no problem with the letter, no. I mean... We could forward it over to them?
And the meeting that we're having on the 21st, I've sent emails that you've all been invited, as well as the park commissioners have all been invited. The engineer, county engineer, Gary Newbrow, Frank Migliozzi, Planning Commission, Ohio EPA, Eastgate. We bringing everyone to the table, because we believe that this issue deserves that kind of attention. And we would appreciate all of your support in it.
Thank you.
Hi, Terry Gignaro from the Helms Foundation. I just want to take a few minutes of your time, and thank you to give you these. We are actually, have completed our renovations over on Pine Street, right above Attorney Thomas's building, that he has donated the top floor to us for the, only the first and the only independent art therapy studio in Mahoning Valley. And we're having our ribbon cutting tomorrow morning. We're not Attorney Thomas.
Dan Thomas, yeah.
His second one. Yes, he has donated space to us, which is so extremely generous. And we have done some renovation up there to do some updating. And now we will be able to do group and individual art therapy and counseling. So we're going to have our ribbon cutting tomorrow. And I just wanted to give you some invitations, and anybody else who you feel would like... And really, it's, we're giving it out to the community. We want to bring awareness to the facility, and that we now are able to offer those services.
Are you any organizations, or are you...
As a provider or as a funder?
As... Okay, so you're providers, and so anyone could go privately and individually. I just wondered if you're...
Yes, we are in...
...spur system.
Yes.
For example, children's services, or any other agencies to provide...
She was here before. You've been here.
We are, we are in some schools. We are in the juvenile systems of Mahoning County. We are in potential development. We work with autism. We are with Senior Ohio Living. We are at Easter Seals. Like I said, I think we are now at about 15 different providers and agencies, social services. Yes, we are. And we're moving into Trumbull County as well. We have several grants out there requesting funding for a lot of services in the area as well. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm going to hand you these, if you don't mind.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. I'd like to remind everybody, I believe it's next Tuesday, February 20th, is the deadline to register to vote. If you're not registered, that is the deadline, I believe. The March 19th primary is next month. I'd also like to talk to the 911 calls with regarding Ms. Frenchco. I liked what that gentleman said there. I think he was spot on. I heard the call. I was one of the ones that made a complaint about it. I want to make it clear that this issue with this dog wasn't a one-time thing. It's been going on and on and on. There's a history here. She, Ms. Frenchco, has a history of violating our 911, abusing it, and now harassing county employees. She wasn't concerned with the welfare of that dog that night. She was upset because it was barking, and it was interfering with her sleep. When she first starts the call, she doesn't say anything about the water, I believe. It's not until she's not getting her way on the call, is when she starts talking about food and water. There's a history here of her abusing 911. Now, other people, I believe, would get in trouble. I believe it may even be a felony to abuse the 911 system. But like always, like everything, she gets away with everything she does. And people come in here, and they stand here, and they confront her, and they ask her questions, and she won't talk to anybody, even though she has so much to say, especially on Facebook. She always has so much to say. But here, she won't come out and say anything when people want to talk to her and ask her questions. When she wants to find her mic, she'll find that mic too, won't she? This is ridiculous. Trumbull County, vote her out next month, March 19th.
Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County in the room? Do we have any callers on the line? Tim? If you want to identify yourself, it's star six. And identify yourself, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Patricia Wyatt. I'm from Niles, Ohio, and I want to address this 911 call from French, from Frenchco. On November 17th, 2023, Animal Welfare League honored Barbara and Mary Busco for decades of service. Grandma always said, "Your cousins are famous." Yes, they are, Nikki said. Busco Twins developed animal rescue programming from nothing to what it is today. Frenchco was at their banquet, only for photo ops, because I was told she came late, because it was $60 to get in. She wasted 911 calls. We need to do something for what she did. I had somebody die in front of me, because I got through to 911 in 2005, but he died anyways. She misuses 911, and something needs to be done. She has family members that rescue animals. What is she doing calling 911? And talking to your mic? Why you held up that paper to that gentleman? I have no idea. I'm tired when I'm out of town, not listening to you, but you can hear yourself on Facebook. When everybody leaves the commissioner's room, and you sit there and do your little shit. Start talking in it, or everybody in the back room, raise your hand. So everything she votes on is not counted for. That's all I have to say, and I can't wait to come back into town to come there.
Okay, next caller, star six, please. Go ahead, star six. Go ahead.
It's Amanda Abear, Warren, Ohio. Everybody's about to be real mad. And that's okay. So while I don't agree with calling 911, I do believe that it should have been through a non-emergency call. I do believe that the dispatcher did escalate that situation. They say, asking to not be cussed at. I'm sure that's not the first time, and won't be the last time. He's heard someone cuss at 3:00 in the morning over a situation. Now, the problem is, this situation probably would have never happened had this ongoing situation at this house been escalated to this level. I was made aware of this situation months ago. And everyone knows there is no love lost between the commissioner and I. But when it comes to animals, I will work with anyone. And her and I spoke months ago, and I told her that although what they're doing is not technically illegal, at that point in time, it wasn't great. And that she would have a long, drawn-out process to try and get them to do better with their dog. I have called non-emergencies three times myself. Twice, January 17th and 20th, when we had the freeze warnings, because that dog was left out. And you can go back and listen to those calls. I, you know, I have no problem with that. Because when I called on the 20th, I said, I understand... I told the very nice dispatcher lady, I understand the first time on Wednesday that they probably gave them a warning. But this is the second time within a week that the dog has been out for a long period of time in freeze warnings, and that does warrant being cited. And I don't believe that they ever were cited. Because when I talked to the Warren City Warden about it, a little over a week later, he had no idea what was going on. So there's no communication between PD and the wardens, for one. And I understand that animals fall under property, as far as legal things go. So there's Fourth Amendment rights involved with these situations. So I understand that an officer probably pulled up, didn't hear a dog barking at the time, and cleared the call. They could have went up and knocked on the door and been like, hey, you know, is the dog out? What, you know, what's going on? And not violated Fourth Amendment rights. As many times as PD has been out there, because a lot of these times, it's like after hours or on weekends, why they PD, who can take animal calls, they just choose not to, could have issued them even a nuisance citation. And these people, I don't, you know, I don't know them. I don't know them, nor do I want to. But they could do better. If they would just do better, then this wouldn't even be a situation. So in all honesty, everybody's at fault all the way around. This is a systemic issue. And guess what? This is what I deal with on the regular. Because this is, with this situation being not totally illegal, but not great, guess what? This stuff still happens when the dogs actually are being physically, emotionally abused and tortured. So welcome to my world. So if we could have a conversation with our police departments to do a little better, maybe that phone call at 3:00 in the morning wouldn't have happened.
Then, I can't remember, Onatz was the guy from the city of Warren, who was the dog person. I can't remember his specific title. But he retired, and they didn't fill that position for a period of time. It's been filled by three different people, and it's been vacant over the last year. So no one has picked up the torch. And I have video and pictures of a dog being outside during bitter cold with its food and water bowls upside down, being strangled with its tether, and had to watch it and call for an emergency to have someone come over and get the animal. I've seen it carried by its collar, by its neck, up chest level, choking it. I've got a video of him hitting his dog. And it has been so difficult to get the agencies that we fund to actually do something about it. My daughter, my family, we feel like we we're watching out for this animal, because it's helpless, and it shouldn't be. And those are my cousins, the Buscos. They are, and they've done so much to advance animal rescue and protection, but leaving, I mean, this dog has been out days at a time without food or water, and no one is doing anything. And God knows it would be front-page news if I went over there and took it and fed it and took it inside and gave it water. So all I have to do is to, the only thing I have is to be able to call. And it's horrible when you have to live this next to someone who neglects and abuses an animal.
Did you follow up the next day, as the dispatcher advised you? And you turned the videos into Warren Police, or go and talk to the police chief?
It's the responsibility of the person who goes out and takes the call to put it on the dog board and stuff the next day, and have been doing that. No, nothing. There are many occasions where this family, or whoever it is, could be cited. There is a cold weather advisory a couple weeks ago, last Christmas, when it was brutally cold, the dog was out there for about a half an hour hiding underneath, on the side of the house. I called and waited and watched, because I wanted to go and help the animal myself. It's disgusting when people do this to...
But you didn't get up the next day and go drive down to the police department and do something about it? You didn't go complain to anybody? You just called 911 and let them handle it, and it's not your responsibility anymore?
I sent an email that night to Anthony Costini, that actual night, whatever...
And did he get back with you?
And then another thing, if anyone Google searches "non-emergency line" for the city of Warren, it goes to their office, the chief's office, or administration building. There is no non-emergency number that's posted anytime, just for the public information. I think that Warren could do better with that.
Anybody else? Any more calls on there, Tim?
Yes. This is Patricia Wyatt again. You can't hear her with her mic. Did she call her cousins, Mary and Barbara, and tell them how much trouble? Because I couldn't hear. I need an answer. Did she call her cousins?
I mean, this is not a conversation about me talking to my family. Can you please get...
You don't have to answer that. You don't have to answer that. Okay.
And that's it. You're done.
I guess I've wrapped things up. I'd just like to address one thing too. Last week, I was not here. You on Facebook have made allegations that somehow we're in cahoots to stick you here. I was in the hospital three times last week with pneumonia. I've got it documented. I showed up for work yesterday. I showed up for work today with pneumonia still to do the county's business. So I just want to tell you that I resent, and I take offense to the thing that because I missed one day of work in a year, and then wasn't here last week for the meeting... No, no, no. That's the first meeting. That was the first commissioner's meeting that I missed out of sickness. You would disappeared and went to Puerto Rico and Dominican Republic and everywhere else, and didn't even call anybody for three weeks. No call, no show. I'm not here one day, and you're, all of a sudden, it's cahoots that we're trying to stick it to you, and we're playing games, and we're doing corruption, and this and that. I just want to tell you, I take offense to that.
Even if both bullies don't show up for work, one of them can come by themselves and have a meeting.
Those bullies?
Yeah.
It's a way to work together.
Yeah, we're together, show up for a meeting.
Commissioner, you've missed more meetings than both of us combined. You want to go through the attendance? You haven't been to a planning commission meeting in over two years. Never been to a workshop. You've never been to a workshop. You come here and act as this is your workshop. It's facts. It's not bullying when it's facts. You don't come to the workshop. I don't want to have this discussion. Just let's end this. To spew facts. That's emotional, I second it. I'll second it too.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantel, Amesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.